Good evening, everyone. It being 7:30 on Tuesday, May 17th, 2022, we will begin our town council meeting. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance and remain standing for a moment of silence. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Please have a moment of silence for all those who serve in our military as well as their families who are here and abroad. Thank you. We will begin our meeting with a roll call this evening. We do have one member participating remotely and therefore all votes will be taken by roll call. Clerk Casey, if you can give us a roll call, please.
Counsel Erica.
Here.
Counsel Hume.
Here.
Counsel Ringus is remote. Are you here?
Here.
Okay. Counsel Flaherty.
Here.
Counsel Ryan.
Here.
Counsel Reynolds.
Here.
Counsel Maglio. Counsel Maglio is not here. Counsel O'Brien. Counsel O'Brien is not here. And Counsel Mackin. Seven presidents and two actions.
Thank you, Clerk Casey. Okay, I am going to move on to our announcements. The first announcement we have this evening, we have had a change to the Ways and Means Committee members. Counselor Mackin has stepped down from that committee. And although our town council rules state the Ways and Means Committee should have four to five members, I did confirm with Clerk Casey that we can continue for the remainder of the term with three members. That is acceptable. And we will modify the committee list so that it is accurately reflected on the town council's webpage. So I wanted to make sure everyone was aware of that update. Clerk Casey, do we need to do another roll call vote since Counselor Maglio has arrived?
No, I just noted that Counsel Maglio has arrived.
Thank you. All right, next, a really nice commendation I wanted to read into the record. This is from our Fire Chief, Chief O'Brien, to Lieutenant Anthony Vinuti. It is with pride and gratitude that I issue you this commendation for your actions on March 25th, 2022. The Engine Three Crew of Lieutenant McCabe, firefighter Daniel Hubbard, and firefighter Anthony Margueras responded to 96 Mayflower Road for a worker pinned beneath his truck. Deputy Chief Rich Clegg immediately called for Engine One Crew to assist, which consisted of Lieutenant Fred Viola, firefighter Vinnie Joyce, and firefighter Andy Leno Weaver. The E Three Crew immediately checked the victim for injuries and began stabilizing the truck with cribbing to ensure the victim was not injured further. The Engine One Crew arrived shortly after to assist in the rescue. Both crews worked tirelessly in unison for approximately 20 minutes to free the victim. Once freed, the victim was treated on scene by Brewster Ambulance and transported to South Shore Hospital. The treating physician noted in his report that the actions of the Braintree firefighters not only saved the victim from catastrophic injury, but in all likelihood saved his life. Without a doubt, this man is alive and well today due to the expedient actions of both crews of E Three and E One. Your role in this rescue speaks volumes about your knowledge and outstanding firefighting skills. Your determination and professionalism saved him from severe trauma and possible death. In the purest sense of the fire service, you gave unselfishly of yourself in order to save another. Please accept this commendation as a sincere thank you from me as well as the residents of Braintree you proudly serve, respectfully, James O'Brien, Chief of Department. So thank you so much, Chief O'Brien, for sharing that and commendations to your crews. That is great news. I also want to thank Clerk Casey and Assistant Town Clerk Deb Starr for all their help with the council business over the last several weeks while Clerk Simino was out. Jim, your team, I know you have all been doing double duty with both jobs. And both clerk of the council and town clerk are extremely hectic and busy. So thank you for always being available, helpful, and gracious. And Sue is back tomorrow, so you can get a night off. But thank you sincerely to you and your team for all of your help, Jim.
Thank you for your comments.
Are there any other announcements from the council? Counsel Ryan.
Thank you. I just wanted to say that on April 30th, we had Braintree Beautification Day, which was coordinated by Mayor Kokoros and his staff. And it was a great day to get out there and say hi to everyone. It was kind of a, you know, a great way to kick off the warmer weather. And I ended up down on the island coming off the expressway right then at Archbishop Williams High School. And I couldn't believe how much debris gets caught up in those small shrubs. But afterwards, I feel like we made a pretty good difference and it was nice to see everyone back at Sunset Lake afterwards. I wanted to commend the mayor and his staff for beautification day. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Ryan. Anyone else? Counsel Reynolds?
Madam President, I just want to make the announcement, just a reminder about this Saturday's Master Plan Steering Committee Open House, which will be held from 1:00 to 3:00 here in Cahill Auditorium. It is a great opportunity for every citizen in this community to comment and to add their two cents, what they would like to see Braintree focus on as we move ahead in the next 10 years from a framework of what we want our master plan to direct our town. Thank you.
Thank you. Great reminder. Looking forward to that on Saturday afternoon. All right, we have no minutes to approve this evening. And I want to make sure I recognize there are lots of town staff here with us this evening. And I'm sure Chief of Staff Taub will introduce them as their capital plans come to the fore. And also thank you, Mayor Kokoros, for joining us this evening. We look forward to having everyone here. So thank you for being here tonight. All right, so we have several communications this evening. We are going to change up the agenda slightly. Our audit report from Powers and Sullivan will be taken up at the end of the evening after voting matters. So thank you to that group for being flexible this evening. But first, I'd like to start off introducing our Director of Veterans Affairs, Vincent Fontaine, who has graciously agreed to join us this evening to tell us a little bit about his work and the events they have planned for Memorial Day. So the floor is yours, Mr. Fontaine. Thank you for joining us.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you for having me. I appreciate the opportunity to speak about Veterans Day, I mean Memorial Day. It's kind of an honor for me to honor those who have served. So some of the things that are going on this Saturday at 9:00, we'll be placing flags at Blue Hill Cemetery. And I'm reaching out to the community if they want to come by and help. There's over 10,000 veterans buried in Braintree, so it's a big undertaking. So we're looking for some help. On Monday, we'll be placing flags out front of Town Hall to honor all those who didn't come home. We have over 80 young men who never came back from war from the town. And then the following Saturday, we are actually honoring Mr. Douglas Thugmore. He was a POW in World War II, spent 15 months at a POW camp. He came home. He worked for Bell for 35 years, raised his family here. He's no longer with us, but we felt it was important to honor him for his service. So there will be a street, I mean a corner dedication on Park Ave in Brewster. It would be his corner. So that's going to go on Saturday at 10:00. And then on Sunday, the mayor will be having a ceremony at Blue Hill Cemetery honoring those who are buried there. And our guest speaker this year is actually Heidi Larson Hurley, who just retired from the school. She was a Marine for nine years, and she will be our guest speaker. So those are some of the things that we got going on next week for Memorial Day.
Thank you so much, Mr. Fontaine. I'd like to ask if any of my colleagues have any questions or comments. Counsel Reynolds?
Thank you so much, Mr. Fontaine. You've done a great job as our Veteran Service Agent. I will be joining you on Saturday morning to pay homage to all those folks who made the ultimate sacrifice for our country and for our way of life so that we can be holding meetings like this this evening. Thank you.
Nice. Anyone else? All right, thank you so much, Mr. Fontaine. And we'll certainly spread the word about the upcoming events and really appreciate you being here this evening.
Thank you.
And all you do in Braintree. Thank you. All right, next on our list of communications this evening, 03422, the mayor's office is here to provide us with a charter review status update.
Good evening, Madam President, members of the council. Nice to see everybody. So earlier this week, I had an opportunity to connect with Peter Morin. For folks that don't know, Peter is the Chair of the Charter Review Committee, which was established in late 2019, if I'm not mistaken, by Mayor Sullivan in accordance with Charter Provision 8-5. So the committee itself is comprised of nine members, four appointed by the council president, five appointed by the mayor. Two of those council appointments must be members of the town council. And so just as a reminder, the members of that committee are, as I mentioned, Chair Peter Morin. Then we have mayoral appointments Alvaro, Aaron Joyce, Jeff Kuntz, and Jen Dolan. And then we have the council appointments Jean Diagrande, Patricia Needham, and then the two counselors were Shannon Hume and Dave Ringus. So looking back, feels like a lifetime ago, March of 2020, representatives of the Charter Review Committee had completed their preliminary review of the charter and had come up internally with some ideas for proposed recommendations, but they felt it was important to engage in a public process in order to kind of firm up and identify additional recommendations for revision. There were public meetings that were posted for April during which that process would take place. And as a result of COVID, as you all know, those public hearings were canceled because our ability to meet in person was no longer an option. After discussing the status with Mr. Morin this morning, we concluded, and it is my recommendation, that we begin the charter review process anew. So we will be reaching out to the previously appointed members of the committee, because those appointments do still stand, and confirming that they want to continue their involvement in this process. If any of those individuals no longer want to participate, then certainly we will seek out new appointees, whether they be from the mayor or from the council, depending on who wants to continue their participation. And then we'll reengage the process. We'll begin the review. Members of the committee will hold public meetings for input, and then they will present the recommendations that will then proceed through the more formal review and approval process.
Thank you very much for the update, Chief of Staff Taub. Are there any questions from counselors at this point?
I have a question but a comment.
Yes, go right ahead.
As a member of the Charter Review Committee, we did discuss the options to of holding remote meetings during that time, but we felt strongly that the conversation would be best served being in public. So we kept waiting and, you know, fast forward, who knew that COVID would be as long as it is. So it was always a topic of conversation. We had always been planning each month where we'd meet next month and whatnot, and that did not happen. But we really, all of us were, as I recall, in agreement to have the public meetings in public, knowing that not everybody is accessible through B-Cam or online or Zoom or whatever that may be. But also, the conversations in person, and I'll attest to that, I think our meetings are better well served with all of the public, all of mayor's staff, the department head, public. It's better in person. That's what our meetings were designed to. So I just wanted to add that note, that it was, we did not, that did not, was not, it was a topic of conversation many times.
Thank you.
So thank you for that update.
Mr. Morin did indicate that if the council was so inclined to hear from him directly, he would be happy to appear. He just was not available this evening. Thank you. Thank you for the update. Counsel Ryan?
Thank you, Madam President. So I think I agree with both of the previous speakers that, you know, we're doing this the right way. It's something that doesn't happen that often. And when we do it, we should make sure we take the time and deliberate properly and make the changes that need to be made. So I would look forward to further updates and Peter Morin coming here to give an update. That would be great.
Thank you. Thank you, Counsel Ryan. Counsel Maglio?
Actually, my question would be actually to Counselor Hume. Does that mean that the meetings would not be carried live? Or is that in addition to having in-person meetings and also having a Zoom or B-Cam option?
Did you say they were not carried live? Is that what you asked?
I'm asking if having them in person, does that mean they would not be carried live? Or can they be?
Oh, we haven't even got to that point yet. So I don't know what it'll look like moving forward with the meetings.
Gotcha.
Yeah. We had finished our review as a committee, which our meetings were always open to the public. They were public meetings. They were always posted. I think we had one meeting that was attended. It might have been by Fred, actually. But the next step was to engage the public and see what, here were our recommendations as a committee. This is what was done so far. Take their recommendations and then go on to the next step for the final review and putting together the charter and any changes. So we didn't get as far as, and COVID changed, we never would have thought we would have been doing remote meetings and Zoom meetings, so.
Right, okay. Thanks.
Counsel Reynolds?
Just another follow-up question to that. So I know that there were initial meetings and there were suggestions, is what we heard from the Chief of Staff made. Are those documented anywhere for us to see?
I think the meetings would likely be posted on the website with where all of the public meetings are, but I can verify that with Mr. Leary and confirm.
Thank you.
Yeah, they wouldn't know.
Go right ahead.
They wouldn't know the minutes and all that, that are all here.
I know there were minutes, because one thing that Mr. Morin mentioned to me today was he's more than happy to continue participating, but he needs somebody to help take notes so that they can do the minutes. Anybody else? Thank you very much. Thank you very much, Madam President. All right, moving on. Counselor Maglio, 04122, Braintree Pride. The floor is yours, Counselor Maglio.
Thank you. I am super excited to talk about this. So as people may or may not be aware, June is traditionally considered Pride Month. It's dedicated to uplifting the voices of LGBTQ people and their rights, their basic civil rights. There's a rainbow flag that was created back in the late 70s. It symbolizes life and spirit and sunshine and nature and harmony and diversity and all the great things. And this month, June, the month of celebrations and gatherings, essentially serves to raise the awareness of the values, the value of those who identify as lesbian, gay, bi, transsexual, or questioning. And what's really special is that for the first time, I believe, in Braintree history, there will be a pride flag flying in front of Town Hall for the month of June. Mayor Kokoros and I meet on a monthly basis, and we had a conversation. And he agrees that it's important to value all of the members of our community. And it means a lot in the struggle to recognize and protect everyone's basic civil rights and dignity. And so I'm excited that the mayor has agreed to fly a flag or place a banner. I don't know that we finalized that, but that's pretty exciting. And so it's an announcement that I wanted to make. I don't know if you want to also say anything, mayor, but I think it's pretty exciting.
Mayor Kokoros?
Thank you, Madam President, counselors, and thank you, Counsel Maglio, for coming up with the idea of putting something together. And, you know, we were hoping to have some sort of event if we could, but, you know, we have a limited amount of time here, so we're definitely moving towards having the flag either flown or on a banner or in some way, shape, or form to show our support for the LGBTQ+ community. And I want to thank you, Counselor.
Thank you, Mayor Kokoros. Thank you, Counselor Maglio. Okay, we are going to, like I said, we're going to move our audit report to the end of the meeting after voting matters. So we will now move on to old business. We have 22031, mayor appointment of John Wentworth to the Waymouth Braintree Regional Recreation Conservation Commission, or take up any action relative thereto. And I will turn it over to the Chairman of Ways and Means.
Madam President, the Ways and Means voted last evening to unanimously recommend approval of Mr. Wentworth to that committee.
Thank you very much, Chairman Reynolds. Would anyone from the mayor's office like to speak? Mayor Kokoros, up again.
President, counselors, I just wanted to ask for favor of recommendation, Mr. Wentworth. I can't tell you how many years I've known him. We don't disclose how many years that's been. But it's been pretty much a lifetime. And he has served in the past on this particular board, and I think has such a great passion for the space and making sure that it's operated properly and maintained, and will do a tremendous job. And I thank you for your positive motion through Ways and Means. Thank you.
Counsel Ryan?
Thank you, Madam President. I've known John Wentworth for a few years, too. I met him when council, president, president, excuse me, mayor. Kokoros, fumbled there a little bit. Mayor Kokoros and I were Water and Sewer Commissioners way back when, back in the late 90s. I think we started in that position, and I've known John since then. And John is the great combination of a wonderful guy who cares about the town. He's smart. He knows how the town operates. And he lives right next to Pond Meadow. So he might get those calls when people get locked in the park, like my sister did a couple of weeks ago. And you have to call. They don't care if you're parked in there or not. They're shutting that gate and they're locking it behind you. So maybe John can go over and let people out if they get locked in there. But John, all kidding aside, John's a wonderful person, and I'm glad to see him still involved with his community that I know he loves very much. So all the best, John. Thank you for volunteering.
Go right ahead, Counsel Hume.
Thank you, Madam President. I also know John Wentworth, and I will be supporting this tonight. John has been so involved in many aspects of the town, and I can't think of anybody better, because this is literally in his backyard. So people say, you know, not in my backyard. This does not apply to John, because it literally, Pond Meadow is in his backyard right near. I won't give any more details, so I don't give away your location. But great appointment, Mayor Kokoros. Fully supportive of it. Congratulations, John. I won't call you up to the mic, because I know you don't like to do that. But congratulations. Thank you.
Now, I know, too. So thank you, Counsel Hume. Would any other counselor like to speak on this? I'd like to point out, and thank you so much, Mr. Wentworth. You know, for residents who may not know, being on a border commission is a volunteer position. So stepping up to serve, you're loaning the town your experience, your expertise, your time. So I would like to also thank you so much for serving and for giving all that back to the town. I'm extremely happy to support your appointment this evening, and Pond Meadow is one of Braintree's gems, for sure. So appreciate that. All right, and we will be doing a roll call vote this evening, unless there's any other counselor who would wish to speak. Okay, is there a motion?
Motion to approve the appointment of John Wentworth to the Waymouth Braintree Recreational Conservation Commission.
Second.
We have a motion by Counsel Ryan, a second by Counsel Hume. Clerk, yes.
Counsel Ryan, we have that as a three-year appointment?
So moved.
Second.
Thank you, counselors, Ryan and Hume. Can we have a roll call vote, please, Clerk Casey?
Roll call. Counsel Erica?
Yes.
Counsel Hume?
Yes.
Counsel Ringus?
Aye.
Counsel Flaherty?
Aye.
Counsel Reynolds?
Aye.
Counsel Ryan?
Aye.
Counsel Maglio?
Aye.
Counsel O'Brien?
Aye.
And Counsel Mackin?
Aye.
It's unanimous. Thank you very much. Thank you, Mr. Wentworth. Appreciate your service to the town. All right, next on the agenda this evening is 22006, mayor request to approve the fiscal year 2022 capital plan or take up any action relative thereto. This is a public hearing, so we will open the public hearing, then we will have discussion, then we will close the public hearing, and then we will vote. So with that, is there a motion to open the public hearing?
So moved.
Second.
Thank you, counselors, Ryan and Hume. Clerk Casey, roll call vote, please.
Counsel Erica?
Yes.
Counsel Hume?
Aye.
Counsel Ringus?
Aye.
Counsel Flaherty?
Aye.
Counsel Ryan?
Aye.
Counsel Reynolds?
Aye.
Counsel Maglio?
Aye.
Counsel O'Brien?
Aye.
And Counsel Mackin?
Aye.
Thank you very much. That is unanimous. With that, I would like to refer to Counselor Reynolds, Chairman of the Committee of Ways and Means, for the recommendation on Order 22006.
Thank you, Madam President. The Ways and Means Order, excuse me, the Ways and Means Committee voted in favor recommending approval for 006.
Thank you very much. And I'd also like to thank the Ways and Means Committee for the volume of work that went into the review of both this motion and the following one for the capital plan. So thank you. Thank you for all of that. It was no small task. And with that, I'd like to ask if there's anyone from the mayor's office who would like to speak on this order. Mayor Kokoros?
Thanks again, Madam President, counselors. Thank you to the Ways and Means Committee for your work. Before I speak on this, I just wanted to talk about this past week. Last week, I was fortunate enough to attend Police Week, which three of our offices that were involved in a shooting were honored. Firstly, canine kit was honored at the law enforcement memorial. And it was quite a moving ceremony for Officer Cushing. And there was a, really a large presence of not only Braintree police officers, folks from Braintree, but also a number of canine handlers and other law enforcement folks to support our police officers. It was quite moving to see all of the canines that have been lost. And I just wanted to mention that, as well as the fact that the National Association of Police Organizations, every year pick a very small amount of cases in which they review many, many different situations that happen throughout the entire nation. And of all of those situations and incidents, our offices were honored with the highest honor, the Top Cop Award. And I was fortunate enough to attend that particular ceremony. And I just want to thank them for the service and thank them for keeping us safe. And that is Officer Billy Cushing, Officer Matt Donahue, and Officer Dicky Seibert. And, you know, what they did was amazing. And they now have been nationally recognized as top cops. Moving into capital, I just wanted to just talk briefly about some of the items that we are asking you to approve through our bonding. What happens with the capital plan is there's a lot of things that need to be done, and I know because I was on the other side reading them in the past, and there's a lot of requests that go in. And we have to basically take care of our absolute needs first. And we were unable to replace a number of cruises due to some of the budget constraints we've had more recently. And we have the opportunity now to replace four of those cruises and a lot of equipment in regards to desktop in regards to desktop computers and other laptops in regards to our police department. And the fire department, really one of the most significant things that we're looking at tonight is the restoration of firefighter, fire headquarters. And in the case of our fire headquarters, you know, we've, we've had a number of feasibility studies done over the years and, over the years and also voted for pieces of this funding. But this $7 million is for a comprehensive, a comprehensive plan to redo our fire station and make the fire station upgraded for many years to come. And I know that many of you have visited it and know the deplorable condition it's in. And this is a real plan. And we've had our staff work with the architects to come up with really an affordable and thorough plan. And, you know, one of the great things is the facilities department created some great savings by utilizing the generous use of the Galvin House for quarters. And they've done such a tremendous job with that and it saved us some money. And the other, the other thing is that this is, you know, our opportunity to finally once and for all, and I know that we all talked about this three years ago and five years ago and seven years ago, and now we have an opportunity to finalize that. So very, it's very important. It's important to me. It's important, I think, for our firefighters and their safety. It's important for the town. In regards to apparatus, we have a lot of apparatus that is aging. And you'll see also in here a pumper truck, which is an absolute necessity. This is something that we will focus on, you know, every couple of years in trying to replace out our aging fleet. There's a number of ADA issues that we wish to address that you'll see throughout the town, parks, playgrounds, et cetera. And there's also munis that we've been working on doing our migration into munis from soft rate. And it hasn't been easy because of COVID, but we continue to move forward with that. So there's some expenses with that. Obviously, years ago, we had our borrowing plan that we put together for schools and roads. And we continue to invest money in the schools as far as, you'll see here, some of the items, repairs and flooring and HVAC, library books. So we continue to make those investments in addition to the new buildings that we're investing in as well. Continue to do our road and infrastructure program. And one of the pieces that is important as well is a place that a lot of people come, that we come all the time, that I come to every day, and that's Town Hall in our parking lot. And parking lot was something that was really on the agenda two years ago. I delayed it because I wanted to take care of the Elder Affairs Building. And we did that. And it's going to be finalized this year. But right now, we have so many hazards here in the Town Hall parking lot that it's so important for us to make this investment and do these repairs. There's items like asbestos removal, town building improvements. I mean, we had some structural deficiencies at the fire station and continued ADA accessibility items that need to be addressed. These are just some of the items. I think that, you know, I want you to know that we have worked, I've worked hard with all of our department heads to really come, come up with a plan that meets our needs today to make sure that we address them. And I think that we have been mindful of the fact that, you know, there's a limited amount of funding and we've prioritized what needs to be done. And I hope that as you review this, we will get a favorable recommendation and we'll be able to move forward. At this point, until these items are approved, we're in a holding pattern on some of them. And one in particular, you know, our vehicles, we can't order them until, until this measure passes. So stand before you and ask for your favorable vote tonight so that we can move forward with the capital needs of our town. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Kokoros. And just for clarification, I believe this order is a simple majority. Is that right, Clerk Casey? And we have two orders tonight. One is to approve the plan and then the following one will be to approve for borrowing. So Counselor Ryan, go right ahead.
Thank you, Madam President. I just want to say I will be supporting the capital budget and the plan tonight. I think it's a very well thought out plan. It's, it's difficult putting together a capital budget. You have, everybody comes and asks for what they need and they are doing their due diligence and the best job they can each department. And it's like they're there to stick up for the department, but in the end, we have to, we can't fund every single thing that every department wants. So this is a well thought out capital plan. It takes care of the major, major things in our town, like the police department, the fire department, the school department. It also takes care of the Department of Public Works, the water, sewer, stormwater. And when you start making improvements in the roadway, you have to do the roads over too. We're continuing the roads program. It's a coordinated effort. If you're going to fix a water line over, you, you need to make sure you're fixing the road at the same time. So there's a lot of thought that goes into this and there's some things that are very timely. Because the last thing you want to do is fix a road and then go back and rip it up three years later. And it also takes care of, you know, a lot of the things that we love about the town of Braintree, the recreational department, the library, elderly affairs. So it takes, it's a very well thought out document that's going to provide a lot of much needed new vehicles and equipment and computers to give staff the ability to do their job. And, you know, I want to take a moment to just say to Mayor Kokoros, thank you for, you know, having the fire headquarters renovation in this capital plan. I thank you. It's something that we need to do. And in the, this day and age, it's not going to get any, any cheaper. The longer we wait, the price is just going to go up. So it's very, I'm very happy to see that in the capital plan and thank you. So I fully support this capital plan and I think it's just going to help us to continue to move the town in the right direction and do the work we need to do. So thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Ryan. Are there any other counselors who would wish to speak on this matter? Counselor Flaherty, go right ahead.
Thank you. There are two motions concerning the capital plan. And one of them has a split vote from the, from the council, or rather, the Ways and Means Committee. But I just want to, I want to clarify my position on some things. But I'm just going to do it now, if that's right. So reviewing the capital plan is one of the most important tasks that the Ways and Means Committee completes each year. Because if there's one thing that I know residents want, is to make sure that we take care of this town. We have to do better than we've done before because this town has reached a point where everything everywhere needs attention all at once. And not just a little bit, but often major repair and sometimes wholesale replacement. But at the same time, we're confronted with comparatively fewer resources to be able to contend with the work that needs to be done. And by that, I mean, I just mean we have less money. So when we review the capital plan, we have to make sure that the projects that get funded demonstrate need greater than other areas of town that also need attention. So the Ways and Means Committee asked more questions than I've ever seen it ask before. The meetings were long. We vetted every item for cost. We made sure that there was a plan in place to see each project through, that proper oversight was there when necessary. We asked questions about how residents could access the plans, timelines for completion, and all sorts of other things. And through that process, I became convinced that each item on the list met the standard for cost, oversight, and above all, need. But now we reached the part of the story where one item was just very difficult for me to support, and that is the paving of the Town Hall parking lot. The plan calls, and I know the fiscal part is in the next motion, but I just want to be clear now. The plan calls for $80,000 of DPW capital funding and $30,000 of ADA capital funding to be used to pave the parking lot and to improve the ramps on the side of the building to bring them into ADA compliance. Town Hall has recently seen much more attention in the last decade or so than most of our other municipal buildings. Here, there's fresh paint on the walls, the floors shine, the windows are new, AC has been installed, the bathrooms are renovated, the internet works. I mean, just look around you. It's lovely. Our guys have done a lovely job on this building. It's fabulous. So, so given that, how can I justify a brand new parking lot as well? Especially when I know as much as I know about the scope of need in this town? When I know what the high school parking lot looks like, where a third of it's not even paved? Or the parking lot at South Middle School, which is just an uneven network of patches at this point? Or the unmet needs of the senior center? Or the vehicles that need to be purchased for the DPW? Or the HVAC system that needs to be replaced at the police department? Or any of a thousand needs at all of our school buildings except our middle schools? Now, I won't do the comparative math for you in every department, but the cost of the parking lot is roughly one-tenth of everything we allocated for the capital needs of all 10 of our school buildings. So I voted against the plan in committee with the intention of parsing out the cost of the parking lot separately in the full council to create a path where I could vote for all of the rest of the budget and against this one portion. But if I am committed to voting against something, really committed to it, then I need to know even more than what was presented to me in committee. Realistically, I need to hear the thoughts of the people who use those ramps on the side of the building. So I called a series of people with mobility impairments of one variety or another and asked them if they were willing to share their experiences with me to help me understand the issue as fully as possible. And, you know, it turned out they had a lot to say. Every single one of them gave me a laundry list of issues surrounding ADA compliance that hamper their ability just to live their lives in this town. One of them spoke about how when he wants to see his son play ball in the high school field, he has to park his car in the gravel portion of the lot because that's the part closest to the entrance gate. And then after he crosses the gravel, bum, 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 he's confronted with a hill that's too steep for him to travel safely in his wheelchair. He goes down anyway because he wants to get down there. And once he's done that, he contends with crossing the pavement or sometimes the grass just to get to the field that he wants to reach. At Watson Park, he has to travel along egregiously uneven pavement on the sidewalk along the chain link fence on the field side of Gordon Road. Other people commented on the difficulty of using sidewalks anywhere in town because of the uneven pavement there and also the barriers that are left in place and the absence of curb cuts that need to be put down. One family described how they leave Braintree to take a walk on a nice day because they need to go somewhere to find a stretch of pavement long enough, even enough, and level enough for them to enjoy. They can't just take a walk in their neighborhood in Braintree. I learned a lot from those conversations about the scope of need where ADA compliance is concerned in Braintree. And it's unfortunately clear to me that, like so many areas of our infrastructure, everything everywhere needs attention all at once. But what these individuals also pointed out to me is that several of them have trouble getting into Town Hall. Sometimes it's because of snow and ice that hasn't been properly cleared. Sometimes it's because the door in the back is left locked when it's supposed to be open. And sometimes it's because a wheelchair van has to have even pavement to be able to place the ramp down onto so that the chair can move from the van to the ground safely. Town Hall is the seat of our local government. It's important for everyone to be able to access. And even if it's only a fraction of the need that exists in this town, you have to start somewhere. And this, this is as good a place as any. I want to thank the DPW guys, John Thompson and Mike McGurty, who spent time with me today talking about all of the details concerned in the plan. They were very specific. They were very generous with their time. They helped me understand things in a greater breadth than what I needed to, to know. I want to thank the residents who helped me understand their point of view and the needs that they feel this town needs to fill to help them equitably access all the aspects of town life that we enjoy. And all of this is to say, I'm prepared to support the capital plan in full this evening. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Counselor Flaherty. Are there any other counselors who wish to speak on this? Counselor O'Brien, then Counselor Maglio.
Thank you, Madam President. I want to rise in support of this because, number one, I recognize that the mayor is painfully aware of how difficult it is and has been budgetarily for this town and continues to be. And so I have the faith that this was properly vetted and only those items that were necessary are in the capital plan. That said, when I do support this, I will ask, because I can, that some of these units for the police, the vehicles, go out and start slowing down some of the speeders in this town. And I know it's not just this town. It's every town USA. But it has to start somewhere. I don't think there's a member to my right that hasn't heard from constituents, and I hear from them almost daily about why is there a sign that says 25 and nobody does 25? And that's a good question. And when I do 30 in a 30, I have people beeping at me and, and they're up my, you know what? It's ridiculous, the speeding throughout this, this town. So that's my slight diatribe, diatribe about that. My other commentary is with reference to, I'll start with the accolade. As I peruse this, particularly for the fire station, just a one item alone, which is housing for the members of our fire force as construction is being done. Our maintenance organization, thank you to the work of the mayor and his staff, are going to save us a half a million dollars by enhancing one of the buildings that we already own to allow the members to stay in there and sleep as, as sleep quarters. So that's a half a million dollar savings that nobody is going to see. No one. They're not going to recognize it. They're not going to see it anywhere because it's not going to show up anywhere except in this document. And so I recognize, and, and I'm not being snide when I say this, but the reason this place is beautiful is on behalf of our maintenance department. And I want to thank the previous administration under Mayor Sullivan who put that plan in place and then this current mayor who has actually put those guys into overdrive. The savings that we have seen that nobody in the, in the town is going to see and recognize except for him, his staff, and we all see it, has just been tremendous. And then, again, because I have the bully pulpit, I'm going to ask, this will be the second budget that's going to come before us and we still don't have a maintenance department that's consolidated. I still see the maintenance listing on, in the school budget. And if it doesn't happen, I'll just act accordingly. But I haven't seen it, I haven't, I was told I was going to be requested to come before the Budget Committee. I haven't, no one's reached out to me. Again, this is a diatribe that's separate from this. But I really implore the administration to do what they can and work closely with the school committee, because I haven't heard anybody from the school committee either, and try to get a consolidated ma, ma, maintenance department. We don't have to do that now. I'm just making a commentary. I see people want to come to the, the pulpit. You don't necessarily have to. Just know that, I guess, and sometimes I say things that, you know, may be a little bit harsh. You're on record. That's all I'm going to ask. And, but other than that, I will support this and I'll support the, the funding as well. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Counselor O'Brien. And because maintenance is not on the agenda tonight, we will just reserve those comments on the record. Counselor Maglio, you are next.
Thank you.
Go right ahead.
Thank you.
Thank you. So I am fully utilizing my status as the newest member of the council and this being my first budget process, and I remind people of that all the time, and I feel like that may give me a little extra leeway and consideration because I know my questions have been never-ending. I know that they are probably probing in a way that isn't always particularly welcome, but it really helps me understand things, and I feel as though that's important for me since I need to vote on these items. And one of the experiences I had in this hurricane of Ways and Means Committee meetings, which was, which has been fascinating and time-consuming and very tiring, one of the things that I, I felt was important to really understand was when things are put in the budget for a purpose, but with, but the plan isn't necessarily transparent. And so that's where a lot of my questions came from, on what is a really small part of the budget. But for me, it was a learning process. And what I learned is that there are, that we can all do better when we work together. And what I also learned is that what seemed like was an eighty thousand dollar expense is, was actually a hundred and ten thousand dollar expense, which is actually going to also utilize seventy-one thousand of previous year's funding, so now it's up to a hundred and ninety thou, or a hundred and eighty thousand dollar expense, and it's going to go from tweaking and repairing to actually demolition and replacing of the ramp. I think that sounds like a plan that makes sense. I think it's a plan that leads to accessibility to this building. I think it's very important that when someone wants to access their town government, that they can get in. The only thing, though, that is really hard for me is the fact that they have to go to the back door to do it. And I understand that there are issues with and cost involved in the side and the front. I get it. But after spending the initial funds for the back ramp and now spending what could be two hundred thousand or more to replace all of that, to continue coming in the back, I just wonder at what point we decide to shift and recognize that maybe that might not be the best option. Now, with that said, I understand that, and I appreciate the plan that I got today that was really fleshed out and truly very different than what we talked about a week ago. It seems like a lot of work was done in that week to figure this out and to get back to us, and I appreciate that. And that's what I mean about when we work together. Ultimately, my question is, given the fact that we have a plan that will be coming in June, I just wonder, and truly, I'm just wondering, does it make sense to identify a pool of funds that will go towards addressing the priorities of that transition ADA plan? Or does it make sense to make a decision before we get the plan? And that's really what I'm wondering about. And I don't know if this is a forum right now for, for anybody to comment on that, it's kind of the question I asked a week ago. I don't know whether I'm just putting that out there for thought, but that's, that's what I'm wondering.
Would someone from the mayor's office like to address that?
Good evening again, and before I address the question, I will take the opportunity to introduce everybody that's here with us this evening.
Thank you, Chief Staff Tom.
We do have a lot of department heads, I think representing all of our departments with items before us. We have Mary Beth McGrath, Director of Municipal Licenses and Inspections, Res Forsberg, Building Inspector, Jim Arsenal, Director of the DPW, John Thompson, Assistant Director and Town Engineer, Lou Dutton, Waterworks Superintendent, Rob DeVito, DPW Finance Coordinator, Mike McGurty, Facilities Director, Ben Hulk, Assistant Director of the DPW, Corey Chambers, Sergeant with the Police Department, Ed Selman, Director of Municipal Finance, and Superintendent Jim Lee from the School Department. We also have, sitting in the back, Acting Director of Recreation, Chris Griffin. And I think I've covered everybody here for capital. So the work that's, that's proposed and planned for the side of the building is, as we've discussed in great detail, in two parts. It is the parking lot, which involves repaving and addressing the drainage concerns that currently exist in that area. With that, it, it kind of flows right into accessibility of the, of the building via the ramp. So it makes sense to complete those two projects in tandem because when you start doing work in the parking lot, particularly in the corner that's directly adjacent to the side of the building, where the, the condition of the pavement is an incredible disrepair, that's where our handicap spaces are, and so when we're discussing and planning to enhance the circulation path and the access to the building from that specific area, it just makes sense to then go ahead and address the deficiencies in the ramp, which have also been identified both by the DPW and the Building Inspector and Director McGrath. So it's a project intended to be done in tandem. I think from a construction and an engineering standpoint, I think my colleagues would agree that that just simply makes good sense and it's more efficient to do it that way. Thank you.
Thank you, Chief Staff Tom.
Could I ask to follow up?
Go right ahead, Councilor Maglio.
So I'm wondering what, what if, and I know it's hard to, to answer a what-if question, but if, if the report comes back from the consultant who's looking at the ADA scan, the accessibility scan, if the report comes back with five really critical recommendations and Town Hall is, you know, ten or eleven on the list of access, that, that's, that's a fear that I have, that we then won't be able to address those top five critical unless perhaps you have some insight as to what may be coming back, and maybe that is at the top of the list. I, I don't know.
So the, the consultant's work certainly continues, but I do know that they, they have identified specifically the condition of the parking lot and the condition of the ramp as potential impediments to accessibility to the building. So where they will fall in the priority, I do not know, but they have already been identified as an area of concern and in need of repair.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Councilor Hume.
Thank you, Madam President. The capital budget is always, it's great to see, but it's always difficult. And this, this document that we get here probably started out like this back in the fall with all, all the department heads submitting their capital needs, and they're not wants, they're all needs, and as you can see from this document, not every department gets what they need because just like each one of us have our own budgets at home, whatever, you know, housing, apartment, whatever that may be, you have to live within your means. The town is no different. We fund all of our projects through the revenue we receive, and so what is on this document is after lots of meetings and fact-finding and all the department heads you see here before us tonight and ones who are not with us, who are all the subject matter experts within their department. So I, I've, throughout the years, served on Ways and Means for eight of the years and all the questions that get asked, and I always relied on this department heads for their expertise to, one, advise me and educate me, which I've learned a lot over the years and I appreciate that. This is not easy, I know, for, for us as a council, but for the mayor's office, but this document before us is always, I think we're fortunate to be able to do all these capital projects that we do do and we, there is support from the mayor's office to fund all these, and that is a great opportunity, and just every single department is represented in here in some facet or the other. I just want to point out a couple of things that, when I first got on the council nine years ago, one of the first things I did was toured the fire station with the fire chief, and I, I, the term I used was "it's disgraceful." And in, fast forward eight years, it's even worse. Our men and women who are in the fire department, it is the only department where they are in that building twenty-four hours a day. So the funding that's in here, I am absolutely one-hundred percent supportive of this whole document, but in particular the fire department because it is long overdue. They've gone through many studies, many, many improvements. If you haven't been in there, you need to go in and see it, and you, that, you need to be supportive of this. We're supportive, and I'm not, I'm not taking away from any other department because I wish we could get every, everything on here, this needs, what your needs are, but we can't. And where it was brought up about the parking lot at Town Hall, I just want to speak to that. That's another, it, it's in bad shape, and Town Hall is one of the buildings in town that every single department is, comes to, every single area of town, whether, what age you are, you come here, whether you're in school age playing on the ball fields, elderly coming in for services, just residents coming into the town clerk, huh? Elections, exactly, elections, our town clerk is here. And I know all of us in the council, you can't walk outside this building, especially in the winter, and not dodge the, the ice patches. And we're all, we're all young up here. Even our, you know, our young children might have difficulty getting through there. I know there's been several accidents and claims, if I'm not mistaken, Chief of Staff Tom. I am fully supportive of that. Even in the summertime, the, the, the ice in the winter, and I'm no expert, gets in, makes it even worse. It's been, you know, deteriorating for years. So I, I thank you for doing that, and from an ADA accessible point, there is so much more funding in here for ADA accessibility. I know there are, there few ADA, we've had two, if I'm not mistaken, ADA coordinators have always been advocating for more money, and I'm, we're seeing that in the capital budget, and I'm appreciative of that. I know we can always do better, but again, we are living within our means, and so I thank Mayor Corrus and all your staff. This is a great document, even though it is small, I know how many hours and meetings and all the department heads, your advocacy for your departments and your staff is appreciated. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Councilor Hume. Any other councilors wish to speak? Councilor Reynolds.
Thank you, Madam President. So I was going to hold my comments for various items within the following motions that pertain to the general fund, that pertains to the enterprise funds, the revolving accounts, et cetera. But as the Chair of the Ways and Means, it's been a great opportunity, and I'm very, very proud of the, the committee and the commitment of the individuals, the questions that were asked. One of the things that is a kind of unique experience for me, having sat for three years as the Chief of Staff and Director of Operations under the previous mayor in his last three years, I agree with the previous speakers here about the difficulty of putting together a capital plan. It's a very, very daunting task, and the competing interests is super high. I mean, so, and it's not an easy job to select what the winners are going to be and who is not going to get a piece of the pie this year. But, you know, the concept of the capital plan, a five-year plan, and how it's managed is the prerogative of the mayor, and I respect that highly, that that's the prerogative of the mayor's office, the executive branch per our charter. And I'm very mindful of the fact of now sitting on this side here on the council and overseeing the committee that provides recommendations to the full council when it comes to matters concerning anything from a spending perspective, and the capital plan, and the, and the operating budget, annual operating budget are the two highest types of tasks that we need to perform in that realm. But I also understand very clearly that as a council, we only have one job really of responsibility, and that's authorizing spending. And in order to do that, it's just a yes or no vote. We do not dictate how money gets allocated. That's the prerogative of the executive branch, and rightfully so per our charter. We are an offset and an oversight from a balanced, check and balance form of government. I clearly understand that. So what we do, and this is the, the, really, the main point of my comment, speaking now, is that our job is to thoroughly make sure that that spending is being done in the most efficient manner possible. So we do ask questions, and we need to be careful that we don't come up to the line to tell the executive branch what to do with their money. I'm fully, fully in agreement that we, that is not our role. But what our role's equally important is, is that we make sure that that money is being spent efficiently and that there's proper accountability and oversight for that spending. And so I was very proud of the fact of the members of the Ways and Means, the level of questioning, the depth, the understanding and the context of all of these requirements that they were asking for from, from an allocation standpoint. So it's a good plan. Some folks missed out, but it is next year, and again, this is the prerogative of the mayor, and I will vote for this plan. Based on that, based on the decisions, or the answers that we received to our questions, I felt that we added some benefit to the process this year, as Councilor Flaherty and Councilor Maglio have articulated their views on some of the points of some of the requests that were asked, the level of questioning, the would-ifs, et cetera. I'm fully, fully confident that we are going to have a, a good capital plan in place going forward in fiscal year twenty-two. And as far as, I, I might as well use this opportunity to comment, the fire station, we are all one-hundred percent in support. It's been a long overdue project. There's been a lot of ups and downs with that project due to the fact that sighting has been a major problem in a way that the fire department was responsible for standards and response times in the central district where this station is located. So it was very limited. And just to correct the record, we don't own, we do not own the Gavin House. That's owned by the Historical Society. That is not a Braintree-owned building. But the, this is, this is really the only option. You have to repair in place, and it's a very, very difficult plan to execute. I have to acknowledge that, and they put a lot of work into it, and we felt that we did add some value to this project by asking a lot of questions. And we do understand that right now it's really, truly in its assessment stage. And the reason I say that is that there are things that still are unknown in that project, and I really feel that there's going to be a necessary return to this body to ask for additional money. I'm hoping that won't be the case, but that's a big project that has to be undertaken. So we fully supported the seven million dollar allocation for that project. So that pretty much wraps up what my comments are. I can see you getting a little lancy there, Madam President.
Are we done or not?
All right. Very good. Well, thank you. If I do think of anything else, I will ask to be recognized.
Thank you, Councilor Reynolds. Any other counselor wish to speak on this matter?
I'd just like to touch on a few things that haven't been mentioned by my colleagues yet, and I am also fully in support of this plan. These are all worthy projects, things I believe the town urgently needs. I know myself, my kids have tripped in the Town Hall parking lot, and I'm especially grateful that the fire department headquarters is slated for its long, long overdue renovation. But I just want to let folks know, this hasn't been mentioned yet, I don't think he's here with us tonight, but our town auditor, who reports to the council, not the mayor's office, has also reviewed the request for appropriation. He has confirmed, the memo is in the public record, that the town can financially support these requests, is fiscally responsible. And I think like anything, every, when everything is a priority, it's really hard, the decisions that have to be made, and we know how many necessary improvements we have to make in this town. So as the auditor points out in his report, items that are needed but are not receiving funding this year include, some of them include one point two million dollars for lighting at the BHS Fields, six hundred and fifty thousand dollars for engineering improvements to Pearl and Ivory Street intersection, six hundred thousand dollars for the DPW building, two hundred and fifty thousand dollars for the recycling center. So these are just a few, right? And, and there's, there's departments that are making sacrifices because everything is important. There are no capital requests for the library or the Elder Affairs Center this year, and residents, I think, should also be aware, the school department is receiving eight hundred and eighty thousand dollars down from its historical allotment of a million. So to point out perhaps what is obvious, if we want to fund more improvement- So, to point out perhaps what is obvious, if we want to fund more improvements, we need more money. Um, and as a community, you know, we're going to have to seriously consider multiple new sources of revenue that are predictable and reliable if we want to maintain and improve our infrastructure. As echoing the comments of all my colleagues, it's all important and it's all important to all of us. Um, so, I wanted to make sure people are aware of that. And with that said, I am really enthusiastic about what we are able to do with the money we have, like Counselor Hume said, within the means we are working with. So, thank you to my colleagues for all of the thoughtful comments this evening. Um, I do want to pause before we close the public hearing, because this is a public hearing. Is there anyone from the general public here who wishes to speak? Close watchers of the council may have noticed, I've got glasses because I couldn't see into the audience, so. Okay. I don't see anyone. Um, so with that, do we have a motion to close the public hearing for Order 22006?
So moved.
Second.
Thank you, Counselors Ryan and Hume. Could we have a roll call, please, Clerk Casey, to close the public hearing?
Counselor Berwick.
Yes.
Counselor Hume.
Aye.
Counselor Ringus.
Aye.
Counselor Flaherty.
Aye.
Counselor Ryan.
Aye.
Counselor Reynolds.
Aye.
Counselor Maglio.
Aye.
Counselor O'Brien.
Aye.
And Counselor Mackin.
That is unanimous. Thank you, Clerk Casey. All right, with that, is there a motion for Order 22006?
Yes, Madam President. Upon the request of His Honor, the mayor, the town of Braintree, through the Braintree Town Council, is, is so ordered to approve the fiscal year 2022 capital plan as submitted.
Thank you, Counselors Ryan and Hume. Clerk Casey, roll call vote, please.
Counselor Berwick.
Yes.
Counselor Hume.
Aye.
Counselor Ringus.
Aye.
Counselor Flaherty.
Aye.
Counselor Ryan.
Aye.
Counselor Reynolds.
Aye.
Counselor Maglio.
Aye.
Counselor O'Brien.
Aye.
And Counselor Mackin. Nine oh vote.
That is unanimous. Thank you. All right, with that, we are going to move on to our next, uh, public hearing, which is 22007. Mayor requests for appropriation fiscal year 2022, general fund capital budget, or take up any action relative thereto. Is there a motion to open the public hearing?
So moved.
Second.
Thank you, Counselors Ryan and Hume. Clerk Casey, roll call, please.
Counselor Berwick.
Yes.
Counselor Hume.
Aye.
Counselor Ringus.
Aye.
Counselor Flaherty.
Aye.
Counselor Ryan.
Aye.
Counselor Reynolds.
Aye.
Counselor Maglio.
Aye.
Counselor O'Brien.
Aye.
And Counselor Mackin. Nine oh vote for opening the meeting.
Thank you very much. That is unanimous and I will now refer to Counselor Reynolds, the Chairman of the Ways and Means Committee.
Madam President, the Ways and Means, uh, voted on this recommendation, uh, of a vote of two to one for nonapproval.
Thank you very much, Counselor Reynolds. Um, with that, I know we just had a lot of discussion on the capital plan, but is there anyone from the mayor's office who would wish to speak on Order 22007?
Thank you, Madam President. Just very briefly, to distinguish this, um, item from the item before it, this is a request specifically to authorize the borrowing for sixteen capital projects, distinct from the memo that was approved, I think, at our last meeting, which related to our enterprise capital projects. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Chief of Staff Taub. And I'll just, um, as it's been alluded to in the prior comments, um, on this order, the council is not at liberty to vote on the individual projects that are seeking capital borrowing. That's out of the scope of this body, as noted by Counselor Reynolds. To, this vote is only to authorize the mayor to borrow money for the prioritized projects. And because it is a vote to authorize borrowing, a two-thirds majority is required for this vote to pass. Um, so with that, is there anyone from the council who would like to speak? Okay, seeing none. Is there anyone from the public who would wish to speak on Order 22007? Okay, seeing none, um, I would ask then, is there a motion to close the public hearing for Order 22007?
So moved.
Second.
Thank you, Counselors Ryan and Hume. Clerk Casey, roll call vote, please.
Counselor Berwick.
Yes.
Counselor Hume.
Aye.
Counselor Ringus.
Aye.
Counselor Flaherty.
Aye.
Counselor Ryan.
Aye.
Counselor Reynolds.
Aye.
Counselor Maglio.
Aye.
Counselor O'Brien.
Aye.
And Counselor Mackin.
Aye.
Nine oh vote.
Thank you. That is unanimous. The public hearing is now closed and is there a motion for Order 22007?
Yes, Madam President. Um, ordered that the town of Braintree appropriates the sum of ten million three hundred and sixty-eight thousand dollars to pay cost of the following capital projects, project. Police vehicles amount three hundred and twenty-four thousand, authorizing statute, chapter forty-four, section seven one. Police data processing equipment twenty-three thousand, chapter forty-four, section seven one. Fire headquarters renovation, seven million, chapter forty-four, section seven one. Fire heavy-duty pumper, seven hundred and ten thousand, chapter forty-four, section seven one. Municipal license ADA compliance, a hundred thousand, chapter forty-four S, section seven one. School flooring, a hundred thousand, chapter forty-four, section seven one. MUNIS townwide ERP, a hundred thousand, chapter forty-four, section seven one. School, Braintree High School renovation, two hundred and fifteen thousand, chapter forty-four, section seven one. School library books, a hundred and fifteen thousand, chapter forty-four, section seven one. School plumbing and HVAC, a hundred and six thousand, chapter forty-four, section seven one. Roadway, roadway resurfacing, one point, one million two hundred thousand, chapter forty-four, section seven one. DPW asbestos removal, seventy-five thousand, chapter forty-four, section seven thirty-one. DPW town building improvements, a hundred and thirty thousand, chapter forty-four, section seven one. DPW parking lot renovation, eighty thousand, chapter forty-four, section seven one. DPW highway ADA improvements, forty thousand, chapter forty-four, section seven one. DPW recre- recreation ADA improvements, fifty thousand, chapter forty-four, section seven one. And for the payment of all other costs incidental and related thereto, that the amounts indicated above for each project are estimates and that the mayor may allocate more funds to any one or more of such projects unless to others, as long as, in the judgment of the mayor, each of the projects described above can be completed within the total appropriation made by this order. That to meet this appropriation, the treasurer, with the approval of the mayor, is authorized to borrow said amounts under and pursuant to the authorizing statutes described above or pursuant to any other enabling authority and to issue bonds or notes of the town, therefore, so moved.
Second.
Thank you, Counselors Ryan and Hume. Clerk Casey, roll call vote, please.
Counselor Berwick.
Yes.
Counselor Hume.
Aye.
Counselor Ringus.
Aye.
Counselor Flaherty.
Aye.
Counselor Ryan.
Aye.
Counselor Reynolds.
Aye.
Counselor Maglio.
Aye.
Counselor O'Brien.
Aye.
And Counselor Mackin.
Aye.
Nine oh vote.
Congratulations. That is unanimous. Thank you to our department heads for sticking with us tonight. We appreciate you being here and thank you for all the work you do on behalf of the town. All right, moving on, the next two agenda items, both require public hearings. They're very specific guidelines for the timing around opening public hearings on zoning ordinances. However, neither of these items will be heard by the council this evening, but we still need to open the public hearing and then we must vote to continue the public hearing. Um, so just as a quick note, um, on the inclusionary housing order, that is still being discussed by the planning board and the non-medical marijuana order, uh, was only just heard by the planning board last week. So, once those recommendations are received, those motions will move to the Committee on Ordinance and Rules, where those will be taken up for debate and discussion. Once the ordinance and rules committee has its recommendations, they will then come back to the council for a public hearing. We will continue to note on the agenda when things are going to be continued and when we anticipate the public hearing, um, for both of these upcoming items. So, with that, we're going to start with the first one, which is 22012, mayor zoning bylaw text amendment, inclusionary housing and associated revisions, or take up any action relative thereto. Is there a motion to open the public hearing?
So moved.
Second.
Thank you, Counselors Ryan and Hume. Clerk Casey, roll call vote, please.
Counselor Berwick.
Yes.
Counselor Hume.
Aye.
Counselor Ringus.
Aye.
Counselor Flaherty.
Aye.
Counselor Ryan.
Aye.
Counselor Reynolds.
Aye.
Counselor Maglio.
Aye.
Counselor O'Brien.
Aye.
And Counselor Mackin.
Aye.
Nine oh vote.
Thank you very much. And now I would ask, is there a motion to continue the public hearing for Order 22012 to June seventh, twenty twenty-two, at seven thirty P.M.?
So moved.
Second.
Thank you very much, Counselors Ryan and Hume. Clerk Casey, roll call vote, please, to continue the public hearing.
Counselor Berwick.
Yes.
Counselor Hume.
Aye.
Counselor Ringus.
Aye.
Counselor Flaherty.
Aye.
Counselor Ryan.
Aye.
Counselor, Counselor Reynolds.
Aye.
Counselor Maglio.
Aye.
Counselor O'Brien.
Aye.
Counselor Mackin. Nine oh vote.
Thank you very much. All right, same exercise for Order Number twenty, oh, thank you. Would we close the public hearing? No, because we continue it.
No, you, you moved it, you moved it, so you're all set. You don't have, why are you doing a continue a public hearing?
Okay.
You're all set.
Nope, that's right. Thank you. Um, all right, so we are now going to do the same thing for Order 22015, citizen petition, zoning ordinance text amendment, proposed amended article XVIIII, medical and adult use or non-medical marijuana establishments and related amendments to section one thirty-five dot six oh one and one thirty-five dot eight oh six, or take up any action relative thereto. So, is there a motion to open the public hearing?
So moved.
Second.
Thank you, Counselors Ryan and Hume. Clerk Casey, roll call vote, please.
Counselor Berwick.
Yes.
Counselor Hume.
Aye.
Counselor Ringus.
Aye.
Counselor Flaherty.
Aye.
Counselor Ryan.
Aye.
Counselor Reynolds.
Aye.
Counselor Maglio.
Aye.
Counselor O'Brien.
Aye.
And Counselor Mackin.
Aye.
Thank you very much. That is unanimous. And now I would ask, is there a motion to continue the public hearing for Order 22015 to June seventh, twenty twenty-two, at seven thirty P.M.?
So moved.
Second.
Thank you, Counselors Ryan and Hume. Clerk Casey, roll call vote, please.
Counselor Berwick.
Yes.
Counselor Hume.
Aye.
Counselor Ringus.
Aye.
Counselor Flaherty.
Aye.
Counselor Ryan.
Aye.
Counselor Reynolds.
Aye.
Counselor Maglio.
Aye.
Counselor O'Brien.
Aye.
And Counselor Mackin.
Aye.
Nine oh vote.
That is unanimous. Thank you very much. All right, uh, we will now move on to new business. Um, we have with us, and thank you so much, Mike, now again, for sticking with us this evening, um, for the update from our auditor, Powers and Sullivan. Welcome. Thank you for being here.
Oh, you're very welcome. And, and don't worry about us sitting in the back. Very interesting, actually.
We've done it before, I'm sorry.
Not often that we get to hear all of the details like that. A week. So, thank you, uh, um, Madam President and council members for having us here tonight. We'd like to give you a little summary of the annual audit. We are finished with everything and the reports have all been issued and, um, hopefully you've had a chance to look them over. Um, the main reports that we do are the annual comprehensive financial report. Hundred and forty-three pages long and it's very similar to a corporate annual report. It also gets submitted to the Government Financial Offices Association for an award in excellence in financial reporting, which you've received every year for the last nine years. And we expect that you'll receive your tenth one with this document. So, um, I, I do want to say that we're a little later than normal when we hear, we're here this year. And it's, it's mainly related to the MUNIS implementation. We included a, um, comment in the management letter this year, just talking about the process and the, uh, commitment that management is going through to get this implementation done. And all of the, whenever you implement a, a ERP system to this magnitude, it, it is a very significant process and it takes a long time. And in order to get it to work right, you have to have everything, all your I's dotted and all your T's crossed and all the little codes that are set up in the background of this software to get it to work properly. And if you omit one of those, you're dead in the water and you have to go figure out what it is and what's causing the problem. So, we got the audit done pretty much, um, in our normal timeframe, with the exception of the final cash reconciliations and accounts receivable reconciliations. And those came at the end of February and we got the reports done within about two weeks after receiving that final information. So, that's kind of why we're here in May this year instead of March or early April. Um, so the annual comprehensive annual, uh, financial report, there are twelve required sections. I won't go through them all, but, um, the document is, is, um, in addition to all of the GAAP requirements of the technical information that's in here, the GFOA requires you to hit twelve points and, and to go through this in order to get the award. And the document, as you know, has passed that test every year for the last nine years and again, we expect it to get it again this year. Um, the last section of the report is the statistical section and it does give you ten-year schedules on financial trends, revenue capacity, debt capacity, demographic and economic information and operating information. So, there's a wealth of information there and virtually all the town departments participate in accumulating that data. So, it's one of the, it's, it's not audited, it's the last section, but there's a lot of information there that you might want to look at when you're, uh, looking at the report to just kind of compare things of how they have gone over the last ten years. And, um, it, there's a lot of information there and I encourage you all to read it. The second report that we do is the report on federal award programs called the single audit. It's required whenever the town spends cumulatively over seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars a year. And we are required to, um, pick major programs in accordance with those, how much you spend. So, major programs, if you spend under twenty-five million dollars, are defined as anything over seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars individually. And we have to audit each one of those programs on a three-year rotating basis. Um, so this year, we audited the coronavirus relief fund and the, uh, also COVID, another COVID fund called the educational stabilization funds. Uh, we had no findings or questioned costs with those, uh, major programs. You did spend in total this year eleven point four million dollars, which was up from, um, four point two million last year. And most of that increase, the six million of it, is a COVID-related funds that have come in for various projects, um, and, and grants across the town. And there's still more money to, to be spent in the future, but six million dollars, uh, increased, uh, federal funding, federal award spending, all related to COVID-related grants this past year. Um, seventy-four percent of the grants were spent by the, spent by the schools and there were twenty-three different programs that, um, were involved in, you know, federal awards. So, the twenty-three different types of grants that you got in. And again, we go through and anything over seven fifty, we have to audit every third year. And, um, again, this year, we audited mostly the coronavirus relief funds. And I, I think that'll probably be the case for the next couple of years. Uh, we issued a management letter, um, were required to communicate in writing significant deficiencies and material weaknesses as determined by the auditor. There were none of those this year. Uh, we did have other comments based on our own judgment of things that we see. And, uh, we have four comments in the management letter. One of them is new and that's the status of the MUNIS software conversion. Um, the Director of Administrative Finance put together a good summary of, of what's been accomplished to date and what's left to be done and I encourage you to take a look at that. I'm glad you go through it with you, if you want me to, at the end of the presentation. Uh, we have three repeat comments. One is to consider the MUNIS student activity module that's available. They have looked at it, management has looked at it. It's on the back burner for right now until, um, more time is available to implement it and funds are available to purchase it because it's, it's not free. I think it's about a seventy-five to eighty-five hundred dollar module. So, that's on the back burner for now, but we do recommend it, uh, still because you do have three, uh, student activity funds that are being maintained on, um, Excel spreadsheets and so forth. And, and this module, we have other clients that use it and they seem to like it a lot. So, I, I'm going to leave it in the letter for, for at least one more year until the, uh, MUNIS implementation is done. We repeat, repeated the comment on the information technology audit that your, um, council auditors did last year and that recommendation is just to follow through on all those comments and that is being actively worked on. And the last one is the future GASB statement for leases, which is, uh, due to be implemented this year. There's a number of leases in the town, mostly at the Bells and the golf course for carts and things like that. And, um, it's just an informational comment to be ready. We've already talked to management about doing it. We don't expect any problem. We've already talked to management about doing it, we don't expect any problems implementing it, and it, it basically just converts all of your operating leases, any operating leases to what they call capital leases, and requires those to be capitalized on the books, and the obligation related to that to be recorded as well. It's not a difficult thing to get, um, uh, implemented, and, but it's informational, and we just wanted to point it out to everybody. So the results of our audits, clean audit opinions on all reports, we had no findings or questioned costs or any matters to be reported in our audit opinions. There were, um, we got full cooperation from management and all the departments. Um, we had no significant audit adjustments beyond the normal GAAP conversion entries. Um, the audits went as planned, and I say as planned, except for the final cash and receivable reconciliations that we waited on. Other than that, we finished most of our work in the allotted timeframes, we do our planning work in the springtime right around now, and then we audit the retirement system in the summertime, we come back in, um, first two weeks of September, and audit fixed assets and anything else that's available. So we got virtually all of that work done, and, and then we waited on the final reconciliations to be done, and they were significant because of new processes that were involved in the cash reconciliation, so we, we gave management the time to get those things done, and we just sat back and waited for them to be finished. Um, so everything else is, is fully compliant with GAAP. Uh, what's new in the two thousand and twenty-one, um, report is you get, you had some new debt, two point four million dollars of a bond anticipation note for the Tri-Town Water Project, fifty-four point four of new governmental debt, which, uh, includes a one point nine million dollar refunding bond that's going to save you three hundred and five thousand dollars in future debt service payments, forty-nine point six million for the self-middle school, and two point nine million for thirteen different smaller projects, the biggest one of which is a million five for road construction. But there's a lot of other, there's, there's twelve other little projects that are included in those as well. Um, there was, uh, two point eight million dollars of new water and sewer debt, and that's for water mains and M W A sewer bonds, and another five thousand dollars was borrowed for the golf simulators at the golf course. Um, there was one new G A S B statement, uh, G A S B is the Government Accounting Standards Board, that writes the GAAP that governments follow, GAAP, uh, generally accepted accounting principles. Um, so there were, they issue statements every year, it seems, they're up to, what, a hundred and...
Hundred and one.
Hundred and one now, um, in twenty years, and, uh, it doesn't seem like there's going to be any end to that, but, so there was a, one new statement issued, it was G A S B eighty-four, uh, fiduciary activities, basically re, redefines your agency funds, and now requires those to be reported as special revenue funds, rather than being in the fiduciary funds. So there was a restatement between those couple of funds where the agency moved over to the middle of the report into the special revenue funds. Not a big deal, but it's, it had to be done. And then, um, you made, uh, contributions to O P E B this year totaling six hundred and seventy-seven thousand in addition to the pay-as-you-go requirements. And then I'll just tell you quickly about the pension liability and the O P E B liability. The pension liability is fully recorded on the books now at ninety-one point seven million, down thirteen million dollars from the previous year. The, uh, plan is seventy-four percent funded now, the, uh, discount rate used in the plan is seven point five percent, down from seven point six in the last valuation. The current year investment returns, the last two years, thirteen point one eight, seventeen point seven eight, I don't think we'll see that again for the next couple of years, anyway, uh, for sure not this year. Um, and the funding is scheduled out to two thousand and thirty-three, there's a requirement to have it fully funded by two thousand and forty, so you're certainly on track for that. The O P E B plan, you have, um, all of the new G A S B statements related to O P E B are fully implemented, the balance of the liability at the end of last year was a hundred and forty-seven million, uh, and that's down about, uh, four million from the previous year. You have an O P E B trust fund where you've set aside funds for future liabilities, there's twenty point four million dollars in that fund, and that's up four point four million from last year. Six hundred and seventy-seven of that was from your contributions, and three point eight million was from investment earnings. So as you start to accumulate, now you've got twenty and a half million dollars in there, and you can expect to earn, so the expected rate of return is, is about equal to your discount rate, or at about, um, seven, what's the discount rate, seven, I think it was seven point, no, six point seven five percent, so that's right around what you're expecting to, uh, receive each year. So if you're getting, get seven percent on twenty million dollars, that's a million four, um, so you're starting to get a, a critical mass there accumulated in the O P E B fund, so that'll take the burden off your future funding requirements as you start to earn money going out into the future. So hopefully that's what, uh, the plan is for that, and that funding plan is scheduled to be fully funded as well in two thousand and forty. You'll have a, a period of about seven years from two thousand and thirty-three to two thousand and forty, where the pension will be done by then, and hopefully you can, if you want, you can start contributing additional funds to O P E B and try and get that fully funded as well. And then, the general fund balance at the end of, um, twenty-one was eleven point seven million, down from fifteen point two million the year before. The general fund decreased by three point five million from the result of your planned use of free cash and, and stabilization fund transfers that are included in the general fund. So the ratio of your general fund balance to your total expenditures, which is the, uh, one of the key factors that the rating agency looks at, is seven percent this past year. Uh, it's, it was, um, um, down a little bit from last year, and the, and the agencies, the rating agencies look for that ratio to be somewhere between seven to fifteen percent. So you're right at the bottom of the acceptable range on that, and just to give you a, a little historical perspective, ten years ago, it was at nine percent, and, and back in two thousand and five, it was what, as low as one point nine percent. So you're still in a, in a healthy range there. You have, um, a hundred and fifty-nine thousand dollars left in your total stabilization funds as of June thirtieth, um, and that's down from five hundred and six thousand the year before. And on a budgetary basis, you had, uh, general fund revenues were less than budget by a hundred and seventy-one thousand dollars, and on your total budget, that's point one two percent. So pretty much you came in right on the number on your revenue budget, and, um, total expenditures, including carryovers of three and a half million, were less than budget by nine hundred and twenty-nine thousand, so there were turnbacks of nine hundred and twenty-nine thousand. And your debt service as a percentage of total budget was five point one percent, and that was up from a little over three and a half percent last year, and the rating agencies are looking for that to be in the range of five to ten percent as well. So you're on the low end of that, so you're on the low end of both of the ratios that the, uh, agencies look at for the most part. So that's kind of my summary of things. Um, the audit went, you know, it went pretty well, you know, except for the timing of a few things, and you have clean opinions on everything, um, no, no major issues at all that we have to report. Um, so I'll take any questions or go over anything else you'd like me to do.
Thank you so much, go right ahead, Counselor Ryan.
Thank you, Madam President, um, I want to thank Mike Meligan, uh, for... Oh, I'm sorry, I, I, you know, I'd like to introduce my co-partner here, Romina Mammeli, um, if I may, um, I apologize, Romina, but Romina Mammeli and I are co-partners on the engagement. We try and have two partners on, on each significant client that we have, so that in case one of us can't make a meeting, or, we do have different roles, um, that we play, but, uh, mainly to service you better, we, we like to have two partners on each job, and, uh, I apologize that I missed, uh, introducing you when we got up here, so, Sally, sorry.
Thank you. Well, Mike, you've been here a long time, coming to Brantree.
And I'm not getting any younger, so that's another reason to have a meeting here.
So, uh, it's, uh, nice to meet you. Um, but, you know, um, um, I think that Powers and Sullivan, uh, does a good job, uh, on the audit, and I want to say thank you, and I think we enjoyed the benefit of, uh, having, uh, a, a longstanding relationship with Powers and Sullivan, the town of Brantree, and I think that's a good thing, that you folks know what you're doing when you come in the door, and you get a, um, we get a lot of value from your time, and, um, I'm very happy to, um, see that, that we have a very good report, a good audit this year, and I think, um, you know, Powers and Sullivan has a lot of experience dealing with Brantree, they have a lot of experience dealing with other cities and towns, so we benefit from all that experience that you have, and seeing that we, um, you stole my thunder, I was going to say with generally accepted accounting principles, I was going to show that I knew what that meant, but you stole my thunder on that one, Mike, but, uh, it's nice to see that we are following, um, that there's no issues with the audit, and I want to commend Ed Stellman, who is another person that's been here for a long time, doing a good job, and, uh, I think we're very lucky to have you here, Ed, and thank you for all the, uh, the good work that you do, I appreciate that. Um, you know, it's nice to see that our, our revenue projections or budgets were, were very well thought out, and, uh, that's great work. Um, I think, um, all the councils could hear that, you know, you know, I don't know if everyone paid attention to the O P E B, but we, we cut the O P E B last year, and, uh, you know, we didn't have anybody beating down the door complaining to us, but it's something that, you know, we can't really keep doing that, in my opinion, we have to fund the other post-employment benefits to make sure we're doing our due diligence for folks, uh, down the road when they retire. And, uh, my last comment would be, I know we have, uh, this long, well, this, uh, previous standing, uh, comment about the Munis software, I would love to have a presentation from staff on where we stand with Munis, just so everybody can really get a good understanding and a refresher, and maybe, uh, if you could talk about what some of the issues are and how you're, uh, you're looking to, um, you know, get those online. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Counselor Ryan. Any other counselors have questions or comments? Counselor Reynolds.
Thank you very much, both of you, for your, uh, your efforts. Um, I, I've had that opportunity to work with Mr. Stellman, and I want to repeat what Ms., what Counselor Ryan had to say. Ed runs a very, very, uh, efficient shop, he communicates well with all the, uh, folks, uh, within the area of responsibilities, so financial reporting, uh, financial processing, tax collection, et cetera. Uh, so Ed, great job once again, uh, it, it's really, it's remarkable how he's able to do that year after year. Uh, the, uh, very good news about O P E B, as far as, uh, we see some maneuver room for ourselves as we get a little bit further, maybe ten years out, twelve years out, um, but as, as, uh, these numbers start to come down, I was a little concerned about the lack of contributions over the last two years. Uh, I'm glad this year that we are making that contribution, so it, it appears that perhaps with the returns, they somewhat offset a little bit, uh, of that schedule setback, uh, for us to get to a point of a hundred percent funding. Uh, additionally, uh, it, it does appear that we are, uh, getting a little too close for comfort to some of these margins as far as some of these rates go, and, um, and I, and I'm sure that the administration, working, um, uh, with the, with the council, uh, will address these in, in a priority, uh, fashion. Uh, so I do appreciate the fact that you've let, you've made yourself available to us for us to be able to come back, perhaps after we fully digest, uh, your report, uh, there's quite a bit of stuff, uh, I should say information, in there that you have to, you've got, me myself, maybe it's just I'm a little thick-headed at times, but I have to read through things like this nature a couple of different times to fully grasp the concepts and pick up some of the little nuanced things that really are meaningful. Um, the, um, but it, it overall, I'm glad to see that we're in the positive today, and, and it's, 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 it's assuring, thank you.
Welcome.
Well, actually, if I may, just one follow-up question, I'm sorry, I did want to ask about Munis. So, um, Munis, Munis is, I mean, the, the, I'm not going to name the, the vendor that we had prior to, but it was a little, uh, shall we say cumbersome, uh, didn't allow for end-to-end processing in the fashion that we are able now, uh, to utilize with Munis. It's a more comprehensive program, one of the things I'm very excited about is the capability for reporting, both in real time, your ability, uh, to, uh, filter, uh, your criteria, uh, and, and I'm sure it's a much better tool for you in the task that you have to perform. But to your point, uh, not all components are yet, uh, available, uh, as they were programmed to be, and it's understandable with, with COVID, it's set a lot of different things back. Uh, I'm looking forward to, uh, that time and appreciate the administration's efforts, uh, in addressing those, I think the sooner, uh, we're able to implement all of, uh, the planned-upon, uh, components. Uh, implementation, it is, it's the last step, but that migration implementation, from my experience as project management and I T, is the most important step. You talked about codes, you talked about indicators, you talked about, um, various backend, um, uh, functionality that has to be in sync. One little thing can throw off numbers, which can drive you mad trying to find out, where did I go wrong here, why aren't these numbers coming up right, this doesn't make sense, so I applaud, uh, those who are involved in that process of updating and making sure that the system, um, is working in the manner that we had expected to, and that the diligence it takes to do that. So thank you for emphasizing those points.
Welcome.
It's a great investment.
It really is, I, I think you're going to really see the benefits over, and, and it is a, you know, it's, it's a, really a three to five-year process to get a new system like that implemented, because you're starting from scrap, you know, you're starting from ground zero when you start building one of these new systems.
Right, right, exactly, and that, and that migration of data from the old system, for your ability, again, helps you in your analysis, your comparisons, various things like that have seeded your accounts.
Yep.
All of these, and all of these things are so important for it to get off the ground correctly. Thank you.
Welcome.
Thank you, Counselor Reynolds. Any other counselors have questions or comments? Counselor O'Brien.
Madam President, um, I want to congratulate Director Stellman for, uh, no findings, I think that's a critical component of an audit, so that's a good thing, and, uh, Director Stellman is always very helpful to all of us. Uh, Romina, Mike, I want to thank you for coming, and thank you for, um, your diligence, I, I find your reports are always very thorough, as you can imagine, but also want to thank Powers and Sullivan for maintaining their flat budget year on year with us, because we're in a tight situation, so send that back to the, uh, to the bosses. Um, so far as the Munis go, were you involved at all with the chart of accounts, or was, is that something that we just handle internally?
Internally.
Okay, and I think, um, our auditor...
Your internal auditors helped with that, I see.
Yeah, helped a lot, so, um, I'm kind of, I'm hoping that that helped progress us in a positive way, rather than having us, uh, be somewhat delayed. If I could ask a side question, which may require Director Stellman to come up, um, I believe that there's a, and I may misstate this, but I don't think I'm misstating this, there's a former counselor who always had concern, by the way, he's the current mayor, who always had concern about the student activity funds. So to me, I'm kind of fascinated, because I think the student activity funds tends to be a lot of cash, could be wrong, but I think it does, and so I think for the seventy-five to eighty-five hundred, I'm just wondering if that, that is the cost, I'm wondering, how much is in the student activity funds, plural? Do we know?
Do you know the answer?
Well, there's set limits on your student activities that get voted every year, so they're only allowed to maintain a certain balance within them. Oh, I'm so sorry, um, your student activities are voted every year, so there's a, there's a maximum amount that they can actually have inside of these bank accounts. So as far as the flow, if you have the high school, you're going to have more money flowing through for prom and some of those year-end senior activities and those type of things. So it really depends on which level, your student activities do get in a grade-upon procedure completed every year, so we do look at those and we test transactions every year as a separate engagement, but what Munis does is it allows all of that manual, uh, check-writing and processing, all to go through Munis versus having someone in each school go through and process those payments.
Right.
So it makes it more automated and a little bit safer going through the warrant process.
Yeah, and I'm just asking that because I don't know if the return on value is there for seventy-five, eighty-five hundred, which seems relatively reasonable to me, that, that, you know, add to the, add that module, but I'll leave that for the administration to make a decision. Um, I guess I, I just would support adding that module, just because the, uh, any, anytime you have manual transactions or check, checks coming in and whatnot, um, there's always room for errors, we'll just leave it at that. Thank you very much, Madam President.
Thank you, Councilor O'Brien. Any other comments or questions from the council? Councilor Maglio?
I have some questions. So it's good to hear that we're managing the money we have well. What I'm also hearing is that we're on the low end of the critical ratios or the important ratios. What I've also read is that our spending is outpacing our revenue, our earnings. And I'm wondering, where in the report is that addressed?
It's really addressed throughout the report. When you see that the general fund went down by three-and-a-half million dollars, you know that you're using reserves because you have to start off with a balanced budget. So you don't really lose money in the general fund. You plan to use reserves, and that's what that's a function of.
Okay. So are there recommendations that you make around how to use less of our reserves, knowing that we're already, our allocations are already lower than what we need them to be?
So we don't specifically recommend how you manage your reserve balances. That's really your job and the mayor's office job and things like that. So we don't have, you know, we're talking about it at this meeting tonight, telling you that there is, that you did use up some reserves and that the general fund went down. But we don't make recommendations upfront to tell you, don't do that again. I mean, it might be the prudent thing to do, but, I mean, that's really not our purview is to make those specific recommendations on how you decide to use those reserves.
Okay. All right.
I mean, the alternative is to cut programs significantly. So, and I know you go through a lot of work to get that balance, the budget balance every year, and that's part of that whole process. So again, like, you asked me the question about whether we chime in on that, and the answer is really no. You know, there's an old saying that auditors come in after the war is lost and bayin' at the wounded. That's, you know, there's a certain amount of truth to that because we do come in after the fact and audit your books. We're not there on the front end of the decision-making process, you know? That's really not our role. So I hope that answers your question.
Okay, yes, thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Maglio. Anyone else, questions or comments? I have one question, and thank you again for all the work on this. And for residents who are maybe watching, all of this is available online. You can read it at your convenience. You can look the numbers yourself. Mike, you mentioned you did an audit of the COVID relief funds. Is there a specific area in the report where residents can turn to review that?
The audit of those funds is really in the report on federal award programs, the single audit report, and it's.
Okay.
It's page six and seven of that report lists all of the different programs that were, and every single one that has anything to do with COVID, they require COVID nineteen to be in front of all of those programs so that they're readily available, you know, identifiable. So those are all of the COVID-related projects that we audited on these two pages.
Yep, I see that there. Thank you very much.
Yep.
And thank you so much for your time this evening. Anybody else? All right, well, thank you again for all the work on behalf of the town. Thank you, Director Spelman, who is, I think, here almost every night, more than anybody else, and for all of your work you do, Ed, on behalf of the whole community. So, thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. I'm good evening, everyone.
Okay. With that, we are going to move on to referrals, and I would ask if there is a motion to send all referrals to their respective committees.
Come on.
Second.
Thank you, Councilors Ryan and Hume. Clerk Casey, roll call vote, please.
Councilor Berwick.
Yes.
Councilor Hume.
Aye.
Councilor Ringus.
Aye.
Councilor Flaherty.
Aye.
Councilor Ryan.
Aye.
Councilor Reynolds.
Aye.
Councilor Maglio.
Aye.
And Councilor O'Brien.
Aye.
Vote is nine-zero.
Thank you very much. All right, with that, I would like to let folks know our next meeting will be the annual town meeting, scheduled for Tuesday, May thirty-first, two thousand and twenty-two, at seven PM. Time change, seven PM for the annual town meeting. Thank you so much to our team from B-CAM, West Ray, Bill Needham, and Jerry Comack, your entire crew for always televising, live streaming, and making sure our residents have access to all these public meetings. And with that, is there a motion to adjourn?
Come on.
Second.
Thank you, Councilors Ryan and Hume. Clerk Casey, roll call vote, please.
Councilor Berwick.
Yes.
Councilor Hume.
Aye.
Councilor Ringus.
Aye.
Councilor Flaherty.
Aye.
Councilor Ryan.
Aye.
Councilor Reynolds.
Aye.
Councilor Maglio.
Aye.
And Councilor, Councilor O'Brien.
Aye.
And Councilor Mackey.
Aye.
Nine-zero.
That is unanimous. Meeting is adjourned. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.